For the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, and with equal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the executive session, regular meeting, and special meeting? I'll consider these on individual motions. Any additions or corrections to either motion on the first? Chuck made a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session on 11:15. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor?
I wasn't here to add this thing.
You can't.
I abstained.
Kathy abstained. Is it the first one? Did I miss one from last time, Gina signing?
I'm sorry.
Did I not sign one from last time?
Yeah. I did.
I missed it from... We've already approved that one in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just have to sign it. Yeah. Thank you.
This is the special section.
Mm-hmm.
Motion on the regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minute... What, regular meeting minutes?
Kathy made a motion to approve. Shirley second. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. And then the special meeting on 11:18.
It was postponed, so I wanted to mark it in the book that it was postponed.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Gina's notes on postponed special meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the postponed minutes.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Shirley seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. Claims and payroll. Any questions on claims and payroll? Shirley made a motion to approve the claims and payroll. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? First up on the agenda, we have Rasio here to present a summary of the planning study. David and Julia are with Rasio. They're going to address the board at this time.
Second. Under David's role, here you men, we're with Rasio Architects, in business downtown Indianapolis. We were hired by the town to facilitate the planning phase of the Preserving Main Street grant project, the Improv Project. We represent a portion of the preservation discipline of Rasio. We've done projects like this all across the state. Very much appreciate the opportunity to work with you on your wonderful building down Main Street. In front of you, you have Kathy's final plan. And I'll let Gina kind of walk you through how we did that, and we talked to her, and you know what we did. Second. Can you hear me?
I did.
All right. It's on.
Yes.
Sorry. As this grant was administered through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, we had to adhere by certain rules and regulations, the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties, as well as the Main Street design guidelines. This program seeks to enhance, recognize, and celebrate the unique character of Brookville, Indiana. And Rasio worked with numerous building owners to develop these drawings and cost estimates you see before you. Buildings that we looked at were all two- to three-story buildings built between the mid-1800s and the early 1900s along Main Street. Our analysis looked at various aspects, including what the historic appearance originally was, structural deficiencies, previous alterations over the years, and appropriate restoration. So this all began in May. The planning phase met, and we had representatives from the town of Brookville, Improv, Main Street Improv, ARA, Indiana Landlords, Rasio, and individual property owners. This program received over 50 applications, and they were evaluated by an independent scoring committee, who narrowed it down to 24 buildings. Their criteria included historic significance, facade integrity, visibility, and contribution to the Main Street vision. Subsequently, Rasio met with all these building owners to conduct field investigation and discuss desired building improvements. This led to the drawings that you see before you. We... A cost estimate was also developed for these buildings, and the drawings were submitted to the Department of Urban Conservation and Archaeology for Section 116 to review to make sure they were in compliance with the Secretary of the Interior standards. The scoring committee, based on the budget that was allowable, selected 12 of these buildings to continue on to the construction phase. So what this booklet goes through is, the first part will show you the 10 buildings that did not move on to the building phase or to the construction phase, but the documents that we produced. These will hopefully give those homeowners guidelines for future renovations, even if they weren't included in this construction phase. The second portion of the document shows the 12 buildings that did move on to, are going to the non-construction phase, along with cost estimates associated with them. That's all I have to say about that. You got your own copies, so please look at them, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions for Rasio on the planning study review? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda. The public hearing on the Preserving Main Street planning study. At this time, invite Tara with ARA to address the board.
The town of Brookville, Indiana, intends to hold a public hearing this evening for interested citizens to discuss their views on this recently completed Preserving Main Street planning study. There were 22 buildings that were studied by Rasio Architects, and it was paid for using federal CDVG funds from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs in the amount of $116,000. This program is funded by Title I of the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. The amount of CDVG funds used for activities that benefited low and moderate income persons was $59,694. The town of Brookville expended $0 in non-CDVG funds on this project, and this project resulted in no displacement of any persons or businesses. Interested citizens are invited to throw white comments regarding this project. Were your comments could have been submitted to ARA, but we received no comments. Gina, did the town receive any comments?
No.
Thank you. And so now I'll open it up for the public to have any comments. If they have any comments, we just ask that they come out and state their first and last name before making comments. I see no one coming to the podium, so I propose to close this public hearing.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
No.
Shirley seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. We have Resolution 2022-8. This is approval of the Preserving Main Street planning study. This is the resolution of the Town of Brookville, the Town Board of the Town of Brookville, Indiana, for the approval of the CDVG planning grant, commercial building facade planning study from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters. Any questions on Resolution number 2022-8? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-8.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. Preserving Main Street draw request number two. Gina?
Yeah. So this is the second draw request for the Preserving Main Street grant. The two invoices we received are from, one from Rasio, in the amount of $24,800, and then the other one from ARA for the grant administration, and that's $1,600. We are privileged to set that claim to receive those funds to the President of the Division.
Any questions on the drawdown request? Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Chuck made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried.
Can we take a second? This is requiring a pass through, and I'm not sure some people can't log on.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
All right, ma'am.
Back on. All right. Next up, we have Crystal with the Franklin County Girls Softball Organization to go over the changes to the master plan.
Yeah. So I told that any changes are every year we have to come up and see if you guys need approval for further future endeavors. And we did decide to make a change to the previous master plan. I think you guys all got copies of that. So you can see originally how we had, it was actually the building on both sides, and the storage company house. We took that shed down from behind there, because you could see the actual picture what it looks like now. It used to be a shed right in front of that base line. It was really old and decrepit and gross. So we took that one down when we put it to fourth field. And then we realized this past season how nice it is for parents and grandparents that have kids playing on both fields to be able to, like, just see back and forth. So instead, we decided to move to a different plan. We still want to get rid of the other white storage shed that you can see in the picture. We still want to extend the opposite side out. We went and stored underneath that one side, now everybody can still see all fields and be able to dig up or re-put your waste of land. It's not really so.
Makes sense. I like the design better that way. Especially with the location of that fourth softball field is going to really get in too close to that monument.
Right. And I know it was important when we put in that fourth field, it's maybe just because we didn't want to point out that we are not taking down that tree.
Okay.
That's why we were there on the side, so we put it in the picture. We're going to just go right up to it.
Okay.
But we'll stay. And we also provided a list of everything that was originally in our master plan, and we marked completely other things that we have back done. And with this draw, a new one. I'm unsure exactly how we came to do this, but we were told that we had to have Architect draw the plans, and we had Jim down at our uncle. He's going to draw the plans and submit to the state and ULS to update our whole paperwork so you don't have to mess it up.
Are you guys anticipating any other change or major improvements this next year?
Yeah, so as far as we would really like this going, we wouldn't get a whole fall, but then we got that, then we need the architect, and we had, we had approval, and so that's where we're here now, so we can hopefully get this moving and possibly get this done before the next season starts.
The reason I ask is we have the help grant that will be available starting first of the year, really, actually, just now.
Yeah.
And so we have another $333,000 to match the $600,000 that we got through ARPA. So one thing that I was going to ask for you guys to do is maybe coordinate with Brent and see if you guys can get an idea of paving the lot down there. I know that was one thing when Aaron presented the first time the master plan, that was a huge, huge request, and the town didn't have the funds at that point in time, that we may be able to allocate first of the year some of the funds from the help grant to modify some of the parks, and maybe if you can go through your list and see if there's, if you put cost estimates to that, when we get time, when it's time to appropriate some of that funds, we may be able to put more towards the softball organization down there as well.
Do you know, like, when we should turn this up into you, or do you have that coming?
Maybe after the first of the year. What do you think, Jess?
Probably yes. We just had our kickoff last week, so I would say after the first of the year.
Yeah. Just start, I mean, maybe work with Brent on the paving quote, see if he can reach out to some of the contractors, give an estimate of what we'd be looking at, and then as you go through your list and prioritize what you would like done, you'll come back to some of the requests, and we may have some funding opportunities first of the year that we didn't have in the past, so.
That would be interesting.
But I think this is a, it's a great plan, and I appreciate the update on the master plan, and what you guys have done this past year and years prior, and what you're going to do following future years too. It's great. Is there a motion, is there any questions for motion on any details in the master plan or the changes to the shelter house?
I'm very particular about what happens down in the park, and, but I think this is a good use of today, you know? So I don't have any other options to do this, so. Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the new design for the park, for the softball fields, and...
Kathy made a motion to accept the new design that's presented. Is there a second?
I don't know.
Shirley seconds. All in favor? Posed. Thank you.
One more question.
Sure.
Do we need a termination plan from Architect? Do you guys?
You will. Before you do the building permit, you have to get the town's permit, and then you go to the county for approval. So once you get the state design release, they'll, you can bring that to us and do the permit.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks. Fire service contract and financing lease. Gina?
I wasn't sure if we needed to use the against, we already approved it in the summer, but we could also...
We've already approved the lease and the rates and the amount, so I'd say just maybe approval authorizing council president to execute the lease. Lease is for the new emergency one truck for $845,135. Any questions on the lease document? It's a four-and-a-half percent interest rate, same as what we approved last meeting with the special meeting. Is there a motion to authorize me to execute the document?
I'll make a motion to have you execute the fire service contract.
Kathy made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Building permit 975. This is for Audra Steiner for Coffee on Main, 606 Main Street. They're putting a new sign for their business. It's a three-by-three wood sign and metal sign on a swing arm existing post.
I'm sorry, it went in front of the construction and was approved.
Yep.
But that COA should be attached.
Correct. Yep, COA is attached.
Yeah. So I didn't... I'm sorry.
The sign looks very nice, actually. Is that us?
Turn that off now. Was it me?
No.
Yeah, I think somebody was muted, maybe.
Is there a, are there any questions from the sign permit? Motion?
I make a motion to approve the Coffee on Main's application.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I don't know.
Shirley seconds. All in favor? Lakeside equipment corporation quote for wastewater plant. Parts replacement quote for a motor drive shaft and expansion pillow block bearing.
I also need to send out an update to you guys today. Maybe somebody will get a P and B mail. Shirley might not have gotten it, but the two pieces of equipment he had to order, the river draft assembly and the pillow block bearing, is all probably say bad with the rushes down there. So it's more equipment, basically, to get this up and running again. It's the least expensive. Still, I've been trying to figure wastewater in eight years.
The motor drive shaft assembly is $4,390, and the expansion pillow block bearing is $4,207. And like Kathy said, it's probably one of the least expensive components in that system. I don't see any reason not to approve it, going to keep the plant operational. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the parts replacement for wastewater.
Kathy made a motion to approve the request. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. ARA membership renewal for 2023. It's end of the year. So we, historically, the past two years, have approved renewing with the Administrative Resources Association. In the past, they've been very helpful in securing grants and helping administer grants, including the most recent recipient of the Preserving Main Street grant, which was presented tonight, and working with Tara, and I think Jess can and Gina can both attest to this, they've been nothing but fantastic to work with and timely communication, very helpful for the town. So my recommendation as council president is to accept the, is to renew our membership with ARA for 2023 for a renewal fee of $3,500.
I definitely agree.
Yeah, I agree also.
Every, every time I've worked with Tara, Eric, it's been a very easy experience.
So you made that motion?
Yes.
Kathy made a motion to approve the renewal. Is there a second?
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
Chuck, Chuck seconds. All in favor? Ordnance 2022-22, Franklin County zoning amendment. This is an amendment that was recently passed by the commissioners on November 15th. Very small change, it looks like, cleaning up some language in the yard and setback requirements under storage, deleting the word "and" and then adding the word "operable" for the permanent storage of licensed or unlicensed or operable and inoperable motor vehicles, recreational view. We have ordinance in addition to this, so I think our ordinance is slightly more strict than the county's. Is that correct, Grant?
Yeah.
So really no change for the town of Brookville. Any questions to regarding the amendment, the proposed amendment?
So exactly what we're going to be building on here?
Just to accept the amendments that's been approved by the county commissioners for the county zoning board, needs to be ratified by the all incorporated towns.
Okay. It's not going to affect the town?
No, it doesn't affect, shouldn't affect anyone in town, because our ordinance is more strict than what this...
It pretty much already been adopted anyway, so I don't think it's like anything. Yeah, I'm making a motion to accept it.
Chuck made a motion to accept the proposed amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Shirley seconds. All in favor? IDHS body camera grant application. Gina or Jess?
Yeah, so I'm just looking for submissions to the Department of Homeland Security. They have a contract body cam grant application. It requires 25% Matthew's pound. I have been in contact with Tara from ARA and Inter Chief Shreve, who are also, Tara offered help in the writing of the grant application. I think Inter Chief Shreve was confident he can take care of this motion on the application. So I think that the grant is due on December 15th, so therefore, we're just looking for councils to approve just to submit that application.
And we had, during the budget time, we budgeted for purchasing the body cameras.
Correct.
So this would just be, this saved the town resources we've already budgeted for next year. Okay. Did we budget for dash cams as well, or just the body cams?
Just the body.
Okay.
And this is only a body camera.
Okay.
But I think equipment is included in this, so we're just going to let you say.
I don't see any reason not to apply for the grant. I mean, if they, 75, 25, seems like a great opportunity.
I think it will cheap on, should.
Should. Yeah.
Shout out to Cassie Roth for passing this along.
Is there a motion authorizing the town?
I'm making a motion to authorize that.
Chuck made a motion to authorize clients for the body cam grant. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. Amended executive session minutes regarding personnel matters grant. Do you want to overview this?
So where to occur on this, I, in executive session, noticed you have to have a specific subsection code study. I had not caught this was an older form. Some of your executive sessions have the sub-site on them, and the litigation we already had on it, but for whatever reason, this one did not. So on the notices, the meeting minutes, the notices of the past, with the meeting minutes, we can go ahead and correct, just to make sure that it's clear, nothing was discussed in executive session that wasn't allowed, just to make sure the correct sub-site agent that references the minutes, so that it gets clean and that way it's straight enough, so that there's not a question of going forward.
Any questions?
We talked, we'll watch for that and make sure all of, all of the reasons we can talk on forward in the sub-sections and everything.
Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes of the executive sessions as discussed?
I'll make a motion.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Posed, motion carried. Posed, motion carried. Uh, resolution 2022 dash nine purging disciplinary files. Uh, this is a resolution purging disciplinary files, whereas Brookville Town Council is in need of action with respect to police disciplinary files to resolve outstanding issues. Uh, now therefore be it resolved by the town council of Brookville, State of Indiana. That all prior disciplinary actions in probationary periods, both official and unofficial, are hereby purged since compliance with the existing standing operating procedures of the town of Brookville Police Department slash Town Marshal. The town of Brookville Town Marshal slash Police Chief is ordered to take all steps necessary to complete such purge.
So we're just came coming and Tony made that now, but during the, the course of investigating, we realized that some things were out of date with respect to personal files. Um, the SOPs that exist in the town, state, certain things should be purged at certain times and that hadn't been done. As far as there were certain probationary periods, they could have been applied and that needed cleaned up as well. So basically this is just going back and making a bright line, getting it squared away and directing the, the chief or acting chief to go over and make sure it was being cleaned up.
Those records just need to be preserved as evidence, like the safety board. So we need to make sure we keep those. I just don't want it to be in any person's.
Gina, would you convey that to the police department? Can you make sure that they preserve those still?
Would it be appropriate to have personnel files kept in the clerk's office as part of the official public record?
I don't. I don't think that's necessary because the chief should be keeping those and keeping up with those. I believe they've always been kept at the Brookville PD, the administer by the chief. So I don't think that change is necessary and I do have copies of everything that I would need. So, am I doing that? Okay, so anyway, I've got those. I know what they are. I know where I got them from. I just want to make sure that Mike preserves those and doesn't destroy them, just gets them out of the file and maybe segregates them out as evidence. But, but, but they should not be in that file because they were supposed to be purged after two years. And then one of them didn't follow anything resembling what the SOP was for discipline and it shouldn't even have any effect. Mike, my position, Mike.
Let's move, um, we entertain a motion to approve the resolution as read. And also direct the interim chief to preserve the files as evidence. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022 24. That's the ordinance, right?
Uh, 2022 dash nine.
Dash nine, oh, dash nine, sorry, the purging disciplinary files and then have interim chief straight preserve those files.
Brooke's made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor? Posed. Motion carried. Uh, the ordinance number 2022 dash 24 amendment to the Public Safety Board ordinance. Whereas the town of Brookville is in need of an amendment to the rules governing its safety board, it's previously, previously established and amended in ordinance 2022 dash 15 and 2022 dash 21. Now therefore be ordained by the town council of the town of Brookville, Indiana as follows. Any officer that is not themselves a subject of an investigation or disciplinary proceeding that cooperates in any investigation or proceeding before the safety board may receive transactional disciplinary immunity. Such immunity shall protect such cooperating officer in disciplinary matters, including but not limited to job retention and future promotions. The town's investigating attorney may be authorized to grant immunity by majority vote of the safety board. To receive such immunity, the cooperating officer's testimony must be relevant, material, truthful, and complete. Should the board refuse to recognize that immunity, then any truthful statements made to the town's investigating attorney cannot be divulged in any disciplinary proceeding. And duly ordered by the town council of town Brookville this day of December 2022. Tony, anything to add?
Yeah, so one of the things that's come up in my investigation is uh, of course, you need some cooperation from the other officers in the department. And one of the things that I need is investigating or any attorney investigating would need is that cooperation from those officers. Some of them may or may not have committed actions that could warrant discipline. And if we're going to solve the root problem, we've got to figure out what that is and the only way we can do that is by having full candid conversations with officers already at staff. And it's kind of one of those where when you're investigating something, you need to know where to go. Now, I may not use something one of the officers told me, but that got me somewhere else, that got me to whatever it's I would need to either clear or choose to refer disciplinary charges against an officer. And only by giving that immunity and the officer understanding that he's not going to be disciplined or face any negative consequences for his cooperation can we have a full and fair investigation. So I think it's important that this, and this is actually something that I made a recommendation to the safety board last week and uh, I, I think that's important that this type of thing happen. And then like within there, if there is a if the safety board says, I don't want to be granted the immunity, fine, the statements are still approved. So I, I think that's important too.
And this, yeah, this has to be real and truthful. Somebody can't come in and say, oh, I did these five other things and expect it to get cleared. That it has to be determined what's going on at that time that the, the department's investigating at the time.
Makes sense. Any questions regarding the ordinance?
I think it's a somewhat very forgiving. I think it's a very forgiving ordinance myself personally.
I agree. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Chuck made a motion to approve ordinance number 2022 dash 24. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds, all in favor? Posed, motion carried. Uh, next up, consideration of reappointment of Terry Mitchell as town marshal or chief of police.
So um, it is my understanding that every year the position of the police chief, which because of the way one of the things that we had to establish when I started the process of investigating the chief and, and a couple of other things, we had to figure out what exactly the chief of police's status is. Is he, is he chief of police or is he a town marshal? Even though we refer to as chief of police, under the statute, he is a town marshal. And it's my understanding that based upon past practice and current practice that the town board votes every year on who to appoint chief. So it is only a one-year point. So whether he is, he is a town marshal, votes on chief. Every year you could appoint someone, you've just chosen not to on someone, so it's not a real problem. There is case law that says if you only have an expectation of a set term, that's all you're entitled to. And the board can vote because the chief serves or the, I'm sorry, marshal serves the pleasure of the board. And the only time you have to wait to terminate is, uh, point is it terminated early. If it terminates by natural succession, either by either disappointment or by any diverting contract, then board has the right to appoint someone else. So this year, you have the right to either reappoint Terry Mitchell as the um, town marshal, also as police chief for another year, year 2023. Or you could vote not to reappoint. At which point you would be able to proceed within the order that you thought was appropriate from your search earlier in the year. I believe that was, that was maybe. So that's where we are. So you can vote to reappoint him for 2023 or you can vote to not appoint him for 2023. It's completely up to the board.
And, and by voting by not to reappoint him for 2023, we could move forward with the interviews and selection of a new town marshal slash chief of police for 2023?
That is correct.
And we could wait till the beginning of the year when Earl and Bridget's on to appoint that new person effective January 1st. We wouldn't do that as this board, correct?
Correct. We would as this board, you'd probably vote on it on, I think, January 2nd or something. Mike continued to serve as the interim chief in that time. And then whatever day you set your meeting, I don't know.
Typically, in the past, when we've had a new board, we've done it on January 1st. Eight, nine o'clock. And, and the years where the board doesn't change, we've done it on the end of the last meeting of December. Um, but because we have two new board members coming on, I think it would be appropriate to wait to appoint the new chief for 2023 until then. But we would need to make a decision on whether we're going to start that selection process. And if we do that, I, I do think that input from Earl and from Bridget would be appropriate and then possibly have them lead maybe a um, a public outreach. I've talked, we've talked to some of the other, um, when we initially advertised for this, some of the other people from other communities reached out and said that their selection process for a chief includes the sheriff's department or cooperating agencies. Um, possibly the prosecutor's office or um, a, a judge or someone that's served in that capacity in the past, just to give. We don't deal with police on a day-to-day basis, so it would be nice to have some other input on who to select. Is what I'm saying, if we, if we would consider if this goes through the line.
And what does this do in any research telling you if, if a party is not renewed as this police chief, town marshal position, do they remain a part of the department?
Well, under the statute, there are two kinds of, there are two basic ranks in the marshal, town marshal system. One is the town marshal, who I would say is the police chief who was appointed out here on the basis and he had deputy. Deputy marshals are dealt with differently. They are dealt with as they just kind of go until they have quit or are disciplinary terminated. But the marshal, based on the case law I look at, says that he serves at the pleasure board. And in this particular case, um, he would be terminated as he was in the uh, case that I looked at, which is from the town marshal though. And he would just be deposed because of that statutory regulation. Uh, there's no way, there's no way statutorily he can go down. If this was an actual police department with a metropolitan police commission and that type of system set up, then he could be demoted to his last, um, we call merit rank. But in this case, there is no merit rank. There is only marshal, deputy marshal. Whatever they, whatever ranks they have in there are not recognized by statute, they're recognized by SOP. So you're either town marshal or you're not. And that's where we are.
So I have a question. Right, Grant? You have appointed a position by us? You're in that capacity, correct?
I think I have been appointed a position, yeah.
Contracted.
Man on a contract, so it's a little bit different. I'm not employed, but you got to think year to year, so I.
I believe so.
I came on in a little bit of a weird spot because I didn't start till February, so it was a little after the fact last year.
Right, this is one, one maker. Is anybody that takes a position like that, oh, they know a head on, but they may not be reappointed. That's, that's a chance they had. So I'm gonna ask pretty much all about the same with that.
Right, yeah, I know, I know, I mean, I would do this. Better hard, definitely. She made one right, you know, like.
Little force, force shot maybe.
Chuck's already winning.
It's a good, good, good point.
I would say too that I think that if there's a vote around the world tonight, I think the three board members will be on after the first year, I think both of you. That's just my two cents because then it wouldn't matter what the new board necessarily does because you three have already said he's not coming back. If that's what you decide to do. If you decide to retain him, then that would need to be an equipment made at that January 1st. And if it's April 1st morning, I will not be here, but I'm just saying.
And point of clarification, this is separate from disciplinary proceedings that is happening by the safety board, correct?
Right, so basically when you have a disciplinary proceeding, what you're doing is you're terminating his right based upon misconduct. And you're terminating it early. So you have to have one of those factors that's like laid out in statute. And you have to have evidence of it. You have to have the disciplinary hearing. That's a separate issue. But if you're just not renewing, you cannot renew for whatever reason you see fit. Or no, it's the old employment will thing. You can, you know, you can fire an employee for no reason. But in this case, you can choose not to renew just because you don't want to renew or you want to go in a new direction or whatever. But he doesn't have a contractual expectation beyond the end of his term, which is.
Can't they also vote to renew it?
I'm sorry?
Can't they also vote to renew his contract?
They could, but that would be.
Setting up Eric Purvis, recusing himself from the safety board, so why should he be able to make a vote?
Because the safety board is a different entity. It's a different entity with different rules and, and what's before the safety board is an issue of discipline. What's before this board and the reason Chuck hasn't accused himself is because you run for board and you want to serve on board because you want to affect policy and make change. So they're just making general determinations of the direction they want the department to go. It's, it, it's the same for any job. So you're, even if, let's just say, even if your boss doesn't like you, your boss has the right to fire you as long as it's not retaliation for something else. In this case, if they vote not to renew, that's just part of their policymaking duties, I guess, for lack of a better word.
So if they have 24 years and you look through the board and just, uh, just say you're gone, I think that's a little excessive myself.
Not a question for me.
Even put this down, boy.
I'm sorry?
Even put this down, boy, it's a little excessive.
Well, that's not.
You guys are old fish. You get to fish to the dinner. In my opinion.
Have you read my charges?
What?
Have you read the charges I prefer?
Yeah, I've read them.
And you think that's okay?
Uh, I haven't.
You think what he did is okay?
Speaking of thinking that, that, that will be, was willful.
Threatening a board member is not willful.
Even if we're threatening a board member, that's. We threaten a board member. That's just hearsay. Unless you got witnesses.
You don't have to recuse yourself either.
I know.
But yes, you can. You can go to her and they are not.
Same, same.
You're gonna do it right?
Yeah, you don't have to renew either. I'm sorry, you don't have to recuse either.
I do, I have.
You do not, you don't. Yeah, you're just doing general things, not specific to anything.
Any other questions for Tony? Is there a motion to appoint or a motion to not appoint Terry Mitchell as town marshal or chief of police? This is, this is not a public hearing. It's a public meeting. We're conducting business. You guys have already interrupted enough.
Questions, so should be asking, hey, we're asking.
It's a public meeting, not a public hearing.
Did you three done express if you don't want to remain in fact?
I've never said anything. I've never said anything like that.
Well, that man said you did.
No. I didn't ask him that yet. I didn't ever say that. Royal taking that. He did not say that.
We're, we're gonna call.
Three expressed.
Call the meeting to order.
Yeah.
Sir, you have not been recognized.
Should I recuse myself?
No, no, I'm not.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. You've not been recognized.
The man expressed.
Sir.
Did you guys express to him that you have already determined you don't want to be back?
The meeting. The meeting is. The meeting, the meeting's been called to order. You have not been recognized. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing. You are entitled to view and to hear what the board is doing. You're not entitled to speak or interrupt the proceedings. Is that clear? Same for you, Randy. It is clear. I just made it clear. Please do not interrupt again, or you'll be asked to leave. So as I was saying before, I was interrupted. There is an agenda item for the consideration of the reappointment for Terry Mitchell for the 2023 year as town marshal or chief of police. Is there a motion either way to either renew or to consider the renewal or to not consider the renewal?
I made a motion to not consider renewal.
Chuck has made a motion to not consider the renewal of town marshal for Terry Mitchell for the 2023 year. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke's second. All in favor?
Says I'm not gonna be here.
What's that? Yeah, abstaining because you don't really have a say, but those three voted unanimously.
You abstain too, Shirley? Kathy and Shirley both abstained, so the unanimous vote, three to zero.
Just real quick, I would like to clarify that no one has paid their attention to me to not renew. I never said that. I said he doesn't have to recuse, and he doesn't have to recuse. I want all three of them to be unanimous in their decision over two renew or not renew. That's what I said. I never said, they told me that they weren't.
They knew you had her bring up the minutes, but that's.
Excuse me.
The only thing that I said was going into this show, they know that they may not be renewed.
No, I didn't say nothing. Thank you. I'm just saying what he said. That's what he just.
I didn't say that myself.
The motion was approved unanimously. Randy, other gentleman in the audience. Once again, you've not been recognized. This is a public meeting. Conduct yourself with the quorum, or you'll be asked to leave. Is that understood?
Gina, can you make sure the record reflects the extension that these new members will be on next year? Thank you.
Based off the, the motion being made, I'd like the board to consider next steps for interviewing the applicants that we've received for the town marshal position.
Are we looking at dates to start interviewing, or what are you looking for?
Yeah, do you want to direct re-advertising, or are you going to proceed with the candidates yet?
I think we proceed with the candidates. We've got, we're able to interview those in executive session, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But that would be by the safety board, or?
No, it'd be by council to appoint. Safety board is just for this one.
Safety board is just for this one.
Correct. We'll be we can set that for eight hours. Let me look at the calendars, we have a lot. And then maybe set executive session to interview the application, applicants for the end of the year. Most of them are employed elsewhere, so they're going to have to give notice.
Should you wait until the two board members are set? And this is not my thing. I'm just asking, should you wait for the next board members to be seated?
I think we can include them in executive session at our discretion. And I would, I would, I would advise, I would recommend to the other board members that we do that because they're going to be working hand in hand with them, just so that on the first, they've already, they already know the applicants, they were, they had a vested interest in selecting them.
Final decision would be made on
January 1st.
First meeting in a public vote.
Correct.
So, yeah, they can participate in executive session, and they would be entitled to vote at the time of made decision.
And then we can, we can also invite, if we want to include other people as part of the selection committee, to give us recommendations based off of their professional experience or personal experience, they can do that in the executive session, we interview the applicants, correct?
Yes, and I was going to, I sent texts asking about dates for a special meeting. Potentially approve those other people if you wanted to at a special meeting.
Okay.
So just some people in law enforcement type positions.
Okay.
Now that you're going to talk about setting a special meeting date.
We'll do that now, since we're talking about that, and then.
Yeah, we can talk about that, but yeah, talk about that, and I guess if that's a special meeting, maybe you have a better idea for available candidates for interviews. So you can set the executive session and the special meeting as well.
So you're thinking the special meeting would be next week?
Yeah.
I don't have a calendar on my phone. Does anybody have a calendar? What about the 16th? It's a Friday.
I'm not available on 16th.
Can we do the following?
You guys have 15th, it's a special meeting anyway.
What time is our?
Six. So you probably have it about eight.
We could set the special meeting for following the.
Okay, if you set it for following, if you have a long meeting, you can continue.
Okay. We're all gonna be there for the 15th anyways, rather than have a separate meeting to meet.
Okay, do, I need to ask, will we be a part of the safety board still?
Yes.
So you would be, yeah, on the, on the, any safety board things until the end of the year, you would be on. I don't. You would be entitled to be in the executive session for interviewing, but it'd be up to you if you wanted to be involved with it.
If you wanted to set up the, the interview process, you could, but you stopped considering the safety board.
Okay, so then December 15th is a regular meeting?
December 15th is a safety board meeting.
And we were thinking about setting a special meeting at probably about eight o'clock. I've got I need to check on a couple rulings on how to schedule that. It gets a little funny when you're scheduling back to back meetings, you know, and everything a little bit. So I just need to double check the rule to make sure we get that right. But I think tentatively, it would be to follow the other meeting, but it's probably to be about eight o'clock, and you could already exactly what needs to be.
So we could set that tentative or subject to your wording?
Yeah, I mean, okay, I guess we can notice that on Monday or something next week, so.
And then we can, at that special meeting, we can discuss the steps for who's going to be involved with the interview process?
Yeah, we can add that. I've got a couple other things. I'm probably going to need a special meeting. And I'm not gonna say, yeah, they'll be on the agenda, I'll go through the process to get a call, but I think probably there's a couple other topics I need to address then.
Okay. Okay. Not, not that night, the executive session.
We could set many dates it's gonna be, so you may want to talk, reach out to some of the candidates that will be involved in the interview there.
Okay. Sounds good. Do we need to make a motion on the 8th to set the work? Can I just call that? I can call at any time. Is that okay? Do you want a motion tonight, or do you just want me to call it whenever you feel?
Yeah, you can call a special meeting if the president, I guess, I'm gonna say it's two board members, the president can call a special meeting, so I'll just say what I need it for, and we can just link up.
Okay. All right, next up, firehouse painting floors, painting slash floors quote. So last year, we budgeted to repaint the firehouse walls and ceiling. They have not been painted since the building was built. So they are also overdue, as was the shilling center. The quote for that is from the Brookville Fire Department, the volunteers themselves. It includes paint and labor to paint the ceiling walls and the firehouse base, hallway, stairway, and upstairs meeting room. It's $7,000 to complete that. And then Joe Fay gave a quote to strip and refinish the floors in the firehouse bathrooms, hallway, laundry room, and the kitchen of the shilling center, and that was for $900. That included the materials as well. As far as what Mark Shire's told me is that they have not stripped or buffed that since installation either, so it is also overdue. Joe did think that he can get that back to a respectable look on the flooring without much cost to the town, so I think that's a that's a good quote to me. Gina, anything to add? Is there a motion to approve both requests?
Yes, I have a motion to approve both quotes.
Chuck made a motion to approve both the quotes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Posed. So earlier this year, the fire department had their golf outing too, and Mark and I talked prior to the golf outing and then after the golf outing. And I don't know if it ever got back to Jess or not, but I talked to him about this the other day. Because they did the fundraiser, and it's essentially the town's money. Though not that they, they raised went to the golf course fund. He's requesting that money to be given back to the department because it's basically an in-and-out expense in his perspective. I told him it sounded reasonable to me that they fundraised the money, went into the golf course fund. I would like to go back to the fire department fund, same for the police, if they ever have another golf outing, if that, one of the town organizations fundraises there to have that expense, have those fees reimbursed back to the golf course. I don't know if you were able to pull exactly. They had some expenses with the additional golf carts, because they had quite a, one of the largest golf scrambles there. And I talked to him about that. He was okay with having that paid out of the proceeds, but see if there's a way to decipher how much was actually raised, and how much should be given back. And if there's not a really good way to do that this past year, since we're talking about rates tonight, if we can build that into how we do things with the fire department and the police in the future, just to make sure that the amount of their fundraising is given back to the, what they I don't want it to go into one pot of money in the town and us have to appropriate that out. I'd rather just have it go back to the fire department or the police if they're fundraising there.
So for next year, when they have their outing, do not collect money for the golf course, and are all those through the fire department?
I would think so, except in the event that we have to order more carts in, rent more carts that we did this past year, because that was a couple, couple thousand.
It was 1,700.
Okay. I think that they cover that fee, or they pay that fee directly to the golf cart company?
Yes.
If they do that, then my recommendation would be waive the greens fee for that day, and let them keep the entirety instead of charging what we normally do to cover the greens fee, if that makes sense.
Sure. I mean, it makes sense.
Okay. And that's just my recommendation, so anybody can dispute that. I just think that.
I mean, so all fundraisers, I don't know how many we had this year, but we're not losing money on that, I would think, are we?
Say that again?
We're not losing money on the fundraisers. It gets, they pay, they pay their, their fees.
Okay.
And then they keep a portion of.
We keep a portion of.
Yes.
Yes. And if they're. And I know, I know we have expenses that day, and I'm not saying that we have to, if there's a, if there's a fee that they have to use, and it's special to the fire department or the police department to cover the expenses for that day, I think that's, Mark and I are not arguing that that should, should be waived, but just to have that fee set up in advance, so there's not confusion on what's coming back to the fire department. And it's worthwhile for them to, to do that there. Because I do agree, it was money that was brought in, it was paid in, and then rather than have them come back and request for a special project, like we talked about this year, just have that paid back or let them keep the fees, and then it just, it's addition, it's less that we have to give them out of general or anything else for public safety, is all I'm saying.
It makes sense.
And it wasn't, in the grand scheme of things, it wasn't that much that we were talking about, but it was a decent amount.
I'm gonna say roughly 35.
I was thinking four to 45.
Yeah.
But it's been June since they, they had that.
At least, yeah.
Would it be easier for us to set up a percentage? You know, because next year, we don't know how many they're gonna have.
I'm just, we, we know what the fixed cost should be of how, how many employees we have up there, and what it costs to cover them for that time, because they're there from seven until.
Seven.
Yeah. So if we know that, and we can say, hey, this is going to be what your charge is, you can keep the greens fee, but the department pays us X amount to cover the expenses for that.
And golf carts too.
And the golf carts, if there's an additional that they have to rent out, which they paid out of theirs, then they can, they can collect the money. It's less that you have to do, or someone, Ron has to do in collecting the money and trying to decipher that out. And then they just pay the golf course a set fee that covers the expenses for that particular day. Does that make sense, Jess?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are you gonna bring something back for that?
I think if, prior to them doing this next year and setting it up, when Mark reaches out to set the date, if you can have some sort of number of what would cover the cost for that day, and you can work with Mark ahead of time to say, hey, this is what's the fee you're going to be giving us, this is just for the town of Brookville, police and fire departments, not for the other organizations, just theirs. Covers that fee, and then they collect their greens fee, and they pay you that fee, so you don't have to pay for the funds that day. That's separate from outside of all of the, the drink sales and food sales, et cetera. It's just the, the fees that they collect. I know, I'm just making sure they're.
Got it.
Good?
Good.
Now I'm glad to clarify.
I'm just trying to break while you're talking.
Capital asset quote. Is this the consultant agreement, Gina?
This is from me, yes. So I'm requesting to get a consultant. Last time I went, these are consulting services, I wasn't sure who's satisfied with.
No.
So I can do, uh, children's Michael, he was a previous auditor of the state. So he is giving me a quote to assess the capital assets. Capital asset requirements, I've gotten a little bit more involved since I've started. Now I have to do appreciation, depreciation costs, historical costs, to deal with that kind of money.
Did we ever get the one from prior?
We did in time, though, the audit. When the auditors were for 2021, he had submitted the law to it, yeah. So they did actually follow it.
Okay.
This contract, he said it might be a little bit more to start, obviously, but then the year after, after he established them, it would be better. I had sent him what we have observed done, and he wasn't completely satisfied with what they had done, so he might have to do a little bit more upfront. Uh, but the hourly rate is $100, and it's capped at 65 minutes.
I signed into the audit proceedings, and it's, I mean, this part of it's mandatory, and this is something they've been coming down harder on municipalities and government agencies, so I think it's.
I think they kind of started that year ago, and then we had to push it back, but I think going forward, I would like to take this.
Yeah.
Establish.
Is there a motion to approve the consulting agreement as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consulting agreement.
Brooke's made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Chuck's second. It's all in favor? Posed. Motion carried. Fund transfer ordinance.
So earlier in the year, from 2022, Chief Mitchell had purchased three police vehicles. I had an additional appropriation in general, but in order to get those purchased at that time, I used public safety funds, which we did not intend to use on purpose. So that second, she, I don't know if I attach it to everybody. So the third, she is acting, I made a police charge of $43,000, $20,000 on public safety. I ended in February additional preparation from general for $43,000 to reimburse public safety fund. I talked to the state board and said before I claimed in my system to reimburse that fund, they suggested I get canceled for the ordinance to actually transfer that. So before I began my system, the state board was to reimburse the public safety fund, $43,000.
Makes sense. Any questions for Gina about the request? Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-23?
I'll make that motion.
Kathy made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Shirley seconds. All in favor? Posed. Motion carried. 2023 pool and golf course rates, Jess?
I have myself gone, um, do some research on membership fees in and around our area. So I, for the 2023 golf season, increased all of the memberships basically by $200. So for all-inclusive family membership, that includes green fees, carbon, orange walls, it would be 1,100 for 2023, or it was 900 for this past year. Then all-inclusive single memberships without your family was 800, I believe, last. And then all-inclusive single memberships without your family was eight hundred, I believe, last year. So it's nine hundred this year. Only other thing besides that, I did add veterans to the police, fire, EMS memberships. We give, there's a lot of veterans that come up, so I thought that we could add them to that. And then I also added a junior rate for ages eleven fifteen for three hundred dollars. And those, those rates are for single memberships at the bottom, so just for these.
Any questions for Jess?
No, I have a comment. So I did another check home today.
Excellent.
Oh, someone's gotta say, what's up?
So much sense. What it used to be, I, I just couldn't believe the prices were up that, that far. But they have. And, and we are very fair. Jess made these prices very, very fair compared to surrounding golf courses. I checked with Indian Ridge, Indian Creek, whatever Brad and them have over at the buy-in. I checked with Liberty Country Club. And I checked with, and I never heard of this golf course, but sort of like Indian Ridge. If you remember over there or Brook Hill or Liberty or Highland, which is in Richmond, you can go and play at a special rate because we're kind of intertwined. I mean, we're just like on a buddy system. Yeah, so I, I checked along Richmond too and surprisingly, I mean, they were all, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I didn't feel very good.
So adding the juniors, it goes, what, what were the ages?
So ten hundred golf for three was a million.
Ten hundred is eleven fifteen.
Do we have any, like, high school students that golf on a single?
We have a lot, but they're typically with family though. But we have some that are just singles. They come, they, they'll sometimes pay a daily rate instead of, you know, getting a membership, but we do have a lot of
Oh, a bad issue. Right.
Yeah.
For free. For school.
Do the other communities, is it, is, if that consists of the junior rate, the eleven through fifteen or that's the system with the other communities that they do? I was just curious, like, with people on the golf team and stuff, do they get any, do they get anything with being on the golf team?
No. I honestly, I don't think that we did, but they're, they don't pay to golf, obviously, when they're up there during meets. And then they come to the driving range and they don't pay for the driving range either, so. But not a lot of them come to just play because they play for school. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I was just curious if we had something for, for high school too or if we didn't. What are you looking for?
We got something now. I mean, we don't charge them for, I think we just don't charge them for range balls if they come up and, you know, we're practicing. And then of course their meets too, but I don't know if they came for a daily. I honestly, I could have given this in the book, but I honestly don't have to recharge them. I don't think we do when it's in season.
When it's in season, we now pay, when it's out of season, we pay like a hundred dollars as a student. And there was a, there was a high, high school and below rate. This is back when Sparky owned it. It was like a hundred bucks. And then when you were a college student, it was like two, two fifty. It was something really low too. Just because you, you weren't there most of the year is what they looked at it. So there was a student rate and you only had to pay for that when you, you only had to use it when you were out of season. So when it was girls' golf season, I had to use my membership. And then when it was boys' golf season, we could go and get range balls whenever we wanted, play the course whenever we wanted. We just had to pay for carts because that was, it was not clear they wanted us to walk. They didn't want us to use carts. So if we wanted to,
That makes sense.
we had to, to buy the carts.
So what, what's the price of your membership?
Twenty-one hundred. Twenty-one hundred.
If we're talking about- Would the thought to get, would be reasonable to include high school on it or not?
I think it would be.
Could, do you think that we could bump that and include high school just because it would just save the select few and help with the golf team and all of those people?
Yeah.
How about that to be, um, really eighteen?
Yes.
Or a student, like, I don't know how-
Yeah.
High school.
Oh, yeah, high school, like, brand high school.
Yeah, high school. I did, and I believe it's, the last one I checked was Richmond, Highland Golf Course. Maybe only charge a hundred and fifty for a kid. But they consider a kid, kid from zero to eighteen.
Wow.
Yeah. They had no, they only had a pop one. They didn't have a ball. Like you've got. That's what that was kind of assuming.
I can just imagine they're trying two and a half. Would not go up.
So ten hundred for three, eleven, zero, eighteen for a high school student, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But do we, do we think if their, if their parents, their family, or members-
So some are and some aren't, but if they are, then they would just be on their family membership. So they put a, and then, yeah, so then it's all inclusive.
We saw the in-town, out-of-town discount, in-town, out-of-town.
Yes.
We saw that discount.
Daily rate? The daily?
Yeah.
I believe so. I don't, I don't rank people up often enough to say I guess so.
Well, I know that, say like if you're a member of Brad, who were Brad's golf course, Brad and Jacy. They can come up with a, whether they, or Highland for twenty-five through the week. And we do, it's thirty maybe on the weekends?
Our regular fee is thirty on the weekend, so it would be something like twenty-eight.
Be a little cheaper.
Yeah.
I don't know if I've touched you on like the out-of-town.
No, I meant like in-town resident discount, like town Brookfield residents.
Did we ever add that for the golf course?
I don't know if we did or not. I know we did-
Are you asking for a daily rate or a membership?
We talked about it for the membership last year, but then we kept the, we did it when we set the prices. We kept them what the LLC recommended to do without any discounts for year one to see how it went. And then we said we, we would reconsider a discount for in-town, out-of-town.
I don't think we set up our daily rates either.
I don't think we did. I don't think there's any, there's any discount for town versus out-of-town.
There's, I've never seen one, so, and I would, I mean, I set the memberships up back, you know, when I first started. So those, those fees are made up before I came, so no, I would say no, there's not.
I think if, we have one for the pool, correct?
Yeah.
I think it'd be appropriate, since it's a town-owned golf course, there's a town rate and an out-of-town rate. Or town discount is what we worded it for, for the pool. The rates are the same. You just get a discount if you can prove.
It was for resident and-
It was twenty-five for the tenants and owners. Yeah, the pool was just very tight. It was twenty-five dollar discount, one presenting, if you were a Brookfield resident, ten towards it.
And I'm not, I'm not opposing to do that, like, in addition to another discount, it would just be off of the, the undiscounted memberships, twenty-five percent or the daily rates, twenty-five percent. Or maybe not do the daily rate, because I don't think we did the daily rate for the pool, did we?
We did.
Did we?
I don't know.
I think we just did off the memberships.
Memberships.
Right?
Yeah, it's just memberships because of flat rate.
And then it was just memberships for discounts. I think that would be the, like, not veteran, not police, not fire. I mean, you already get the discount there, but if, if you have just a single person or a family, then we did twenty-five percent?
We did twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
An apple is twenty-five dollars, so I don't know if you want to like-
Do you want to do a percent? So it's consistent, like a fifteen, twenty percent? Like, what are you?
Even ten percent.
Ten percent?
What's, what do you think?
I mean, the all-inclusive family, but it probably apply more like nine hundred dollars. But all-inclusive single, I think more than it's gonna apply to a lot more. And if they're big maybe, then you have families to find some of it. What, did you say ten percent?
Ten, Brooke said ten fifteen, or fifteen, twenty. I said ten. It's up to four.
I mean, ten is-
What's the percentage off, it's just twenty-five dollars for the pool.
Twenty-five dollars.
What's that work out as a percentage?
I mean, ten percent would be-
So, I don't know. I mean, for the-
What's, what's?
Those people seen in the past last year for the pool was one hundred.
So it's like twenty-five percent.
But it's, it's twenty-five dollars consistent across any, so like, the discount is bigger on, the percentage is bigger on a small family versus a large family because it's just straight twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
So the percentage won't be consistent.
Correct.
Do percentage on both or just do a set fee on both?
If you have percentages, you're gonna have wacky numbers, so.
But if you think you-
Do you though, if you do ten percent, like, the nine hundred dollar pass, which is ninety, like, oh, that's easy math?
Yeah.
Especially when you're swiping a credit card, you just ten percent off and swipe.
There's a ten percent, but not to the, some, I think ten-
Sounds easy to me, Gina. No?
Why?
Does that make you twitch?
Would you just do a flat rate like you would do?
Do a flat?
If you have a salary, you know, apply more, I think, like, tactically, I would think you would apply more to. Well, I guess you would apply those. I would always do a single rate too, but you have two different rates, so what do you make that for the flat rate?
I do the percentage because you've got multiple rates.
Don't, don't you have a lot? I think they may be all inclusive of, or not, maybe. So all inclusive of nine hundred?
Yes.
And what, so, or membership, so.
That's for green fees only, and that's for the people that are working for green fees only.
I think Debbie's having a hard time hearing because they're cackling in the back incessantly. We can't hear because you guys back there disrupting again.
I can hear the microphones.
I can't hear them because you're back there and Debbie can't hear either. You guys have been disrupted the entire meeting.
No, we just, right here, because I didn't, it's right here, okay?
I think, I think flat rate would be the easiest thing, ten percent this year.
Eighty is fine. Ten percent is fine, that's fine. So instead of nine hundred, it'd be eight ten.
Yes.
We can, we can-
It'd be the same for the pool. It would be in-town residents, tenants, or business owners?
Correct.
It would be the same for the pool. It would be in the residence, tenants, or business owners?
Yeah.
So is there a motion to approve the updated rates for the twenty twenty-three year and the discounts?
Approve the rates along with the discounts.
Chuck made a motion, Chuck made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor?
Thank you.
Fair. The pool now?
The pool now. So for that one, I just kind of did easy. I tried to be as easy as possible with how I'm doing. I just, I had twenty-five dollars. So like the single pass was a hundred, so the share was one point five. Family two, it was one point five, now it's one fifty. So I just raised it to twenty-five all the way.
Like, that's what we did in the year of two days ago.
And then the daily rate from seven to eight. Oh, I, yes. So for pool parties, I added twenty-five slot. Instead of three hundred, three twenty-five.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Any questions, discussion on rates? No? Motion to approve?
What were your rates?
The rates.
That's for the golf.
That's for the golf course.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-two pool rates.
Brooke made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Me or Sean?
Chuck.
Someone? Who did?
I don't-
She was the one.
All right. Brooke made a motion. Is there a second? Now you're not gonna fight her.
Sorry.
Shirley seconds. Okay, Shirley seconds. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Anything else, Jess?
No.
Okay. Brooke?
No.
Chuck?
Nothing.
Gina? Brandon?
Uh, I will not be here on the, the one we have. So I'm gonna be out every time.
Anything, Tony?
No.
Shirley? Anything else?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Winter Wonderland looks great. Winter Wonderland looks great.
It's absolutely good. Winter Wonderland is out tonight. There's a lot of outings just because of the weather, so.
I didn't put it out tonight.
Yeah. Try more night, night would be better.
Any comments from the public regarding the agenda items?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask the town and the lawyers how they can take, unless you guys go to a different job, when you recuse yourself from the safety board, you're still the same people. There is no difference. You still got the same opinion. And your bias. So I don't think any of you should vote for this.
I think the attorneys already answered that question. Tony, you're welcome to answer it again, but I don't think it's necessary.
Well, I just want to get it on record since I was supposed to speak back here. Well, I'm just a tackler.
I'll answer again in that, this, I'll answer that again, that the safety board has a specific task and that's to determine whether discipline is appropriate in a specific set of circumstances in which a potential bias could be an issue. However, the only thing that can stop a town board member from voting on something is that there is the appearance of or actual conflict offenders. In this case, there is no conflict offenders because they were voting on a routine, general matter of whether to retain him or not. Like I said, there are different standards and there are different rules for the two boards and what would constitute the necessity for recusing. This vote, none of the five, uh, no, none of the three remaining on board this year had any type of conflict offenders or any type of issue that would cause them to need to recuse themselves. So are you sure that all three agents won't be there next year? Absolutely. You three, they're not for real watching, they're not being their voice, so there are going to be members of the board for
Two more years.
Two more years until their term expires unless they resign or something. And if they do, you can't predict that. So as of now, there moves the board extending and they'll do their job.
So the reason two on the end, right, he recuses himself, you understand why? I understand. I know exactly why. Because- I know a lot more why to be. Because? Why? Or not just, or not like me, sir. Did you guys, so their benefits carries over to the first of the year? Or did they-
First of the year, they're being recharged because they-
But they're, as you're even through the holidays. Do their benefits carry through the holidays till first of the year?
He's still on administrative paid leave until the safety board hearing and the determination that the safety board makes, correct?
So, yeah, this is just a governor new role as of the end of the year.
Yeah, this is what I know.
You can go back to a different position. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
They can be rehired as a new police chief?
They could rehire, they, the new board could rehire if they choose to do so. All they did tonight was vote that he would not be renewed as chief or as town marshal for next year. Now, they're gonna have a special meeting on January first, they announced that. And they can choose to hire whoever they still want at that time. It's a public, well, it's a-
It's a public meeting.
Ten, yes, comment no?
Correct.
It's just a public meeting, not a public here.
And I don't know if it's set definitely on, the first is a Sunday. I don't know if that, waiting around.
You're meeting on the third, so you might want to just put it off there and mic soon, okay? There's no problem with that.
We just have the other appointments. We always do all the appointments on the first. I don't know if we've done it on Sunday before.
We've never done Sunday.
We'd probably do the, the second. But if we're doing it on the third-
Maybe on the third.
I mean, they're all, they're all considered holdover until we-
That's getting lost in the weeds. I think that's, that's basically it.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be on the second?
It'll be when we set it.
Um, it'll, it'll have to be announced once they figure it out. They just get a say in the first, which is a Sunday, and I figured that would be right.
We've just always done it on the first, but we've never done it on a Sunday since I've been on.
It's all right.
Anything else tonight?
Yeah, we, we don't get over time or something.
Any other comment? Motion to adjourn?
I can motion to adjourn.
Kathy made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brooke seconds. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried.